This is Tuesday, July 23rd, Committee of the Whole. Roll call, please.
Calling the roll, Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Tuma.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schran.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Present.
Ms. Stevens. Ms. Stevens is absent at the moment. Ms. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Council President Brady.
Present.
You have a quorum. Yes, Ms. Marcia Goldberg.
Hello, Mr. Gallagher and council members. First of all, I urge you all to donate blood on Friday. I do it regularly. It's a really good thing to do for the community. Meanwhile, at this point, before you again discuss the opposing resolutions about the position of county sheriff, the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland wishes to express again its adamant opposition to returning to an elected sheriff. Ten years ago, we were among the many civic groups and leaders who not only contributed ideas to the well-respected and widely-publicized team who drafted the charter, but also gathered thousands of signatures to get the charter on the ballot, where it received resounding approval from county voters. Linda Mayer, sitting here now with me, was among the Leaguers who contributed suggestions to the committee and to every Charter Review Commission that has met since the charter passed. Two weeks ago, I contacted former Shaker Heights Mayor Judy Rossin, one of the charter's drafters, a longtime member of the League, and I know you, Michael Gallagher, had emailed with her or spoken to her earlier. I asked her to explain the drafter's thinking about the new appointed positions. I'm quoting her answer. "By the time we were drafting the charter," which is after the Abbott Commission met a year at least afterwards, "the rule of accountability seemed to apply equally to every bench position. Almost all, and certainly including the sheriff, had declined to follow requests from the commissioners because each had his own fiefdom. Elected officials were immune, no reason now to make an exception for just one." Now I'm speaking. Certainly, it's possible the charter could be revised to make our county government serve this community better. Council's alternative plan for the office of sheriff might be one of those important revisions. Meanwhile, we fully realize that good people who work hard can fail. That's always true, no matter how they come by their jobs. But in our county, with its troubling history before 2009, it's far better to stick by our charter when it comes to elected offices, and to ask all of you and Mr. Butis and his staff to work even harder to fix what's not working the way it should. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it? Thank you. Okay. Been looking forward to today to get on with the business of Cuyahoga County. We have two resolutions that are being suggested and move forward. We'll read both of them right now, if you could, into the record, just in case there's overlap and debate on either one.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Resolution number 2019-0134, providing for the submission to the electors of the County of Cuyahoga an amendment to repeal Section 5.08 and enact Article 16 of the county charter providing for the election of the sheriff, including the powers, duties, qualifications, and compensation of the office. And resolution number 2019-0144, providing for the submission to the electors of the County of Cuyahoga an amendment to repeal Section 5.08 and enact Article 16 of the county charter to provide for additional requirements of the sheriff, including the powers, duties, qualifications, term, and removal process of the office.
Okay. I wasn't paying attention. Was that both?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. My mind was elsewhere. I guess we'll find out how that happened. So I think what we'll do is take the first one first. I would like to start by thanking everyone here, everyone that had a hand in this, in both of these pieces of legislation. I appreciate your input. I appreciate your care. And those of us, I believe there's six of us that were here from the beginning, I think know how important these decisions are. We were truly freshman legislators when this government was founded. We found our way somehow. We made mistakes, and we corrected those mistakes, as you will throughout your life. I think we've made Cuyahoga County better. We've hit some roadblocks. We've hit some walls. And we've done our best to get over those walls and to get through those roadblocks. And I said last time how proud I was of my colleagues. I still am, and I will be at the end of today. But we have some tough things to decide here. And I think truly that the core issue of what we're dealing with is not personality-driven, it's what's best for the county. And to start out, I'd like to thank all those that took time out of their day and their life to come before this committee and to express their concerns, either pro or against either one of these pieces of legislation, starting with Judge Russo, Prosecutor O'Malley, Public Defender Stanton, Sheriff Reed, the Buckeye Sheriff's Association, the Cuyahoga County Police Chiefs Association, amongst others, that expressed their support. Also, Mayor Bruce Akers, Mr. Kramer, who is one of the framers, and Mayor Rossin, who was mentioned. The only thing that I found, and I think that needs to be answered, and I don't know if we'll ever get there, and probably won't, was I asked a simple question, is who made the decision to not elect the sheriff? Who is the expert that you ran this by and you jumped on the back of that expert and said, yes, this person who knows about the sheriff, knows the legal ramifications of what the sheriff does, works with the sheriff, has intimate knowledge of what a sheriff does? Who is that person? And I found it strange that no one could tell me. And they've had plenty of time. No one could tell me. So I either have to conclude it was a knee-jerk reaction to the previous sheriff or sheriffs, or there was an expert, and nobody can remember who that expert was. So what we didn't have then, we will have now. We had no transcript to go back to. We had no record to go back to. We now have a clean-cut record. We know who the experts are. We know what they said. We know their expertise of dealing with the sheriff. And for posterity's sake, God forbid we have to revisit this situation again, that council will be able to reflect back on the record that we built, as to did it go right, did it go wrong, who said what, and who listened to who. So as we start out, we'll start with the first resolution, which is myself and Mr. Brady's, if anybody has any comment or debate to move forward on electing the sheriff before the electors. Mr. Brady?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yes, I'm proud to have been one of the key sponsors of this legislation. I still believe that a direct election of a sheriff is the preferred way to go about this. I am impressed by the fact that 98% of the counties in the United States of America elect their sheriffs. I am aware of the fact that our neighbors in Allegheny County and in Summit County, who have charter governments that include county councils and executives, also have elected sheriffs. I have not heard of real problems with that process. I have heard that a one-party political situation is not ideal. That's true. It's true in many parts of the country. But we have seen, as an example, even over the last nine years, we've seen three prosecutors. We saw one prosecutor decide not to run for reelection. We saw one prosecutor win without the endorsement of his party, the majority party, Mr. McGinty. And we saw Mr. McGinty in turn be defeated in an election. So the idea that we don't have the ability to have elections in this county, I think, is a fallacy. So I support this legislation. Now, it is more than aware to me that there are at least sufficient votes to prevent this from being forwarded to the voters. It's clear. I have carefully studied the alternative legislation. I find that it has many positive attributes. As I've said to some others, it gets to about 75% of the way toward what I would like to see happen. I think it does give the sheriff a significant amount of independence. And I am quite willing and prepared to support that legislation, as it seems to have a broader consensus in the council, and I think it's good legislation. But I haven't changed my mind.
I have thoughtfully considered both of the pieces of legislation, and I am speaking out now to support the election of a sheriff. I believe that democracy requires that the people who are the residents with the ability to vote get the ability to change government as they see fit. When you appoint a sheriff, the person who is the appointing authority is who gets to change their role in government. They can change their job description. They can bring somebody else in without notice to the public. But when they're elected directly, that change can take place as soon as the residents feel it's not an appropriate choice. My colleague referred to McGinty being unelected. There were some people who thought Mr. McGinty did a fine job, but obviously not a majority of the residents of this county that were eligible to vote. And so whenever there is a change to be made, I want to consider what democracy really calls for and how we empower the people to help us make those changes, not to assume that the people don't know enough to make good decisions. I think, again and again, especially with civil rights-based issues, the people have been, a majority of the people, have been willing to understand why we empower ourselves with these votes and why the American way is so tied to being able to vote and change our decisions. Sometimes we've elected people who don't represent us well, but we can go back to the polls and change that and remove them from office. And occasionally, we put people in office who shouldn't be there, but then we can recall them by going to the ballot for a recall or simply not electing them at the next time. I think that what we really do need to change are the credentials for who can be a sheriff in this county, and that we should not put layers of supervision on top of that sheriff. I think that they should be responsible for a whole series of law enforcement activities. Those activities shouldn't be divided and scattered to people who don't even have law enforcement backgrounds or an understanding or experiences in criminal law enforcement or adjudication. And so that is why I have supported and will continue to support until something else is revealed to me that we move to elect a sheriff directly. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything further? Seeing nothing further. Are there any amendments on Resolution 2019-0134? Hearing none. I'll accept a motion for Resolution 2019-0134 to the full body of the council at today's meeting. Do we have a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Calling the roll for Resolution Number 2019-0134. Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Tuma?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Schran?
No.
Ms. Conwell?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
No.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Council President Brady?
Yes.
Motion does not carry.
Thank you. Resolution 2019-0144, are there any amendments before we discuss?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
To my colleagues, I had sent you something this weekend to take a look at. I believe what we all want is for the sheriffs to have true autonomy. I think that's what we're all striving to get at in different ways, but I believe that is the basis of what we want for the new he or she, to have true autonomy and to run the prisons as they want. So looking at the legislation that council members Tuma, Simon, and Jones put forth, I think it's a good start. I think it's an excellent start in not have, under an appointment. But I thought, you know, in dealing with the directors of HHS, how could we make it a little stronger? Because I know how the terms are with the county executive, and is four years really enough? So I put forth an amendment to make that longer for an eight-year term. And I put that out there. Sorry, I did not read any responses. If you sent any back, I've been kind of busy, to see if that would be something that you would willing to amend this legislation that is before us. I can read some of the advantages that I thought an eight-year term would give us. Increased recruitment possibilities because potential applicants will recognize the additional employment security provided by a longer term. Number two, increased level of autonomy for the sheriff, who will be less threatened by the potential that the county executive will determine not to reappoint after the initial four-year term for political reasons. Number three, improved long-term planning opportunities for the sheriff, independent of the election cycle, for possible capital projects, longer-term strategic plans, succession planning, and staff development. And I want you to note that although an eight-year elected term would be unusual, it is not unusual for an appointed director of a county agency to serve in their position for eight years or more. And either the exec or the council can initiate the removal process at any time if the sheriff is not appropriately discharging the duties of their office. I would ask for you to please consider it.
Yes, ma'am. Is there a motion to consider this amendment?
I'm going to make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second for purposes of discussion?
Discussion. You want to lead on?
No, I don't. I just follow.
Kills it on the floor. Usually, well, usually when you don't have a second. Debate.
Through the chair. Thank you. I appreciate Ms. Conwell's support and principle of the proposed legislation. It's just, having helped author this, I think the four-year term with an opportunity to be reappointed to an additional four-year term, which is staggered, affords the accountability and the autonomy that you seek. And I think we're both trying to get to the same end. I just think eight years is a little long and can actually run, in theory, the term of three county executives. And when you think in those terms, you know, that could be a little excessive. Even our county judges only have six-year terms. So again, I certainly appreciate the thought and the insight, but I would be opposed to the eight-year term, just because I think it's excessive and unnecessary. I think what we're doing covers what you're trying to do as well, respectfully. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to thank my colleague Conwell for providing this for us to consider. What I'd like to see is if this passes, and I hope it does, this second version of a charter amendment, that we would see how it goes. And if there's something we want to look at down the road, I think it's important for us to keep it in front of us. But I think it's too much now because this is a significant change, either way. But thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Calling the roll for the amendment to Resolution Number 2019-0144. Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Tuma?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Schran?
No.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Stevens?
No.
Ms. Simon?
No.
Ms. Baker?
No.
And Council President Brady?
No. No.
Motion does not carry.
Are there any other amendments to be discussed? Is there any further discussion on the item?
Mr. Chairman, when you say item, you're talking about the legislation itself, not the amendment. Okay, correct. Yeah, I just want to say to all my colleagues, I certainly appreciate all the time, energy, and effort each of you have put into this important discussion, even those with the opposing legislation. And I don't necessarily even know that it's opposing legislation. It's just, it's a different way of us trying to achieve the same ends here. So I would just have to say that the citizens of Cuyahoga County roughly 10 years ago voted on this new form of government. And we have to continue to allow it to progress, even when there are growing pains. And certainly, this is one area that we've seen some growing pains. And I do believe that this proposed legislation put forth here, this alternate legislation, if you will, allows for better checks and balances on the office of sheriff through our council being able to perform its legislative oversight duties. And I do believe that, given our history, I think this proposed legislation is something that needs to be looked at very closely by each of you. Again, we allow for the autonomy to occur. We increase the credentials. We stagger the terms. So there is accountability, and we perform our legislative oversight. So I would ask, moving forward, for council support on this. You know, in the end, if this goes before the voters and this passes, we do have the ability, moving forward, if this doesn't work, to change it. So rather than go full throttle into the past, I think we should take a smaller step here and see how this works. And I'm confident that, given our legislative oversight and our awareness of what's going on, it will be successful. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too have been in favor, because both of these pieces of legislation, a consistent theme was that it's time to make sure that we write the criteria for what a sheriff should be, what their education, what their background, what it takes. And the council president and I penned a letter that says that we know we're going to have a vacancy coming up here very soon. We have actually pulled the language out of both of these and said, this is the minimum that we will expect from the county executive to present to us as a candidate going forward. And I think this body, when we speak today, will put this on the record, that this is going to go before the ballot. And we also make it very clear, the county executive, do not bring us somebody who has zero experience, like we did for the jail. Don't bring us somebody that has no background and does not belong in this position. And so with the good news about both of this, we have a common thread between both these pieces of legislation, that they're supportive. And as Mr. Tuma talked about, as far as taking incremental steps, this is very, very similar to what we did with the inspector general. It follows that same path. It says that we are letting down a line in the sand, saying, this is what we expect. We expect an independent person to be the inspector general. We also expect that the sheriff will be an independent person once put in this position. We are going to do our job to make sure we hold them accountable, and we're going to make sure that we do our job to hold the county executive accountable when they put forth a candidate to us going forward. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate everything all of my colleagues have done on both pieces of legislation, because I believe both pieces provided the independence that is needed. But again, I do believe we don't, we should not go back to the past. We should continue to move forward and build this new government. I appreciate my colleague Yvonne Conwell's piece of legislation, because it's something we all should do. This may not be the end. I remember what Councilman Dale Miller said in our first, within our first year of being in office. As busy as we were, Dale said, we're building an airplane in flight. And I'll say, yeah, you're right. That's exactly what we're doing. Well, this plane is still flying, and it still needs work. There is no final piece of legislation that we can just sit back and cross our legs. We have to continue to look at it, assess what the situation is, even in light of the new legislation that comes forward, and make changes as necessary. So I do support the Resolution 144, and thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And, you know, again, we are certainly have our hands full in what we're deciding here tonight. I would like to say, though, we, I'd like to hear from our law director. He has, I'd like to know if he has any concerns about our putting this on the ballot and what that means for us as a council, if any change of responsibilities beyond oversight as it exists today. I think it's important that we make sure, whatever we put on the ballot, we are 100% sure of the ramifications as it affects our oversight. And I would just want to make sure that he is not seeing anything perhaps that we haven't considered. So, Mr. Huth, could you please give us your opinion on what our responsibilities are, given this be put on the ballot as written?
Mr. Chairman, the councilmen, and with all due respect to every member up there, we have communicated our issues in our written confidential privileged memo. I want to be sure everybody understands that any discussion of that here in public would waive that privilege. And frankly, I would very much prefer, as your lawyer, to let that memo speak for itself.
I'm not sure what to do with that. I think that...
Well, ma'am, let me...
Yes, go ahead, Chair.
As our employee, I think you should answer the question of the councilwoman better than that.
Well, as a council, I'll try to.
Just because you put confidential and privilege and everything else on it, it's, and I had trouble with this also. Who asked for that?
Actually, the council president and I discussed it after the first time this issue was heard. I spoke with him about a couple of issues that we had at that time, and he said, let's sit down and talk. So we put the memo, we met with staff, and I put the memo together following our meeting with staff.
He asked for a confidential opinion from you?
That's, the council staff did, yes.
The council staff did?
Yes.
Council staff, who asked? Was there any discussion on the other piece of legislation?
Mr. Chairman, there was not, so...
Mr. Chair, Trevor McClure, council staff. We were in a discussion with the law director, I believe, end of last week. He was giving us his verbal thoughts about the proposed legislation, and we asked them to put it in writing, so he could send, he can share his thoughts with all of council.
Was the intent that it be privileged?
We didn't discuss that matter.
Mr. Chairman, whenever you're talking with your lawyer, it's privileged unless it's specifically waived.
Mr. President? Councilwoman, what would you like to do with this?
Well, I guess I'm confused as to why this would be privileged. I mean, it's just...
Excuse me, Ms. Baker. Can you turn on your microphone?
I guess I'm concerned about why this would be considered privileged. It's an opinion on something that we're going to be putting on the ballot, and it definitely impacts our responsibility as to what our oversight is. We think it's one thing, the opinion says it's another, and I think we should have absolute clarity so that the people who vote know exactly what they're voting for. I don't know why it's considered privileged. I don't know what qualifies this as being privileged, except that it was discussed among, in a conversation that put it there. But I don't, I don't understand why it's, it would be something that we can't share. If I can get that answer, then, you know...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I wouldn't necessarily say that we think one thing and you think another. We simply pointed out some shortcomings, and discussion of those potential shortcomings here in public puts us in a difficult position in the event of a challenge going forward.
Mr. Chair, if I may add, and the law director, I believe, hinted around this, council can waive that privilege. That's something that council can do.
Concern, if I may, is that, and I read the document, and there are recommendations of changes in wording and things like that, that change this. Maybe not a lot, but change this. So if this is confidential, when do we change the legislation to present to the voters?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that answer. I mean, the memo was initially provided last Friday, and it was re-sent with some minor changes yesterday.
Under the veil of confidentiality, my question to you remains, when do we open the veil?
Mr. Chairman, as Trevor said, if you choose to waive the privilege, as a council, as a whole, as a body, I suppose we can do that, if that's what you want to do here.
Memo, what do you want to do?
I want to keep the privilege, for your benefit, for the benefit of the county.
When do I draw that curtain back? When do we do that?
In light of the deadline to get this on the ballot, it would have to be today or in your August 6 meeting, or between now and then, if you want to sit down and talk to it between now and the August 6 meeting.
Yes, would be the most advantageous to perfect the legislation to your recommended heights.
If you need to vote on it today, then let us go back and work on a substitute. If the August 6 meeting works, then give us that time to do that.
To the author.
You go ahead first. Okay, yeah, if you're throwing it to me, I have to say, there are parts of the, without waiving privilege, there's parts of the confidential memo that I just disagree with. So I think, you know, I think some of the opinion is just that. I think it's opinion, and...
That's correct.
Yeah, and I happen to disagree with it, and it's a reasonable disagreement. And we can agree to disagree on it. But I think some of what is recommended entirely changes the intent of the legislation to have legislative oversight.
And, Mr. Chairman, on the point of, you know, there are plenty of lawyers on this body, you all know, you ask two lawyers the same question, you're going to get three different answers. So it is an opinion, it's a recommendation only.
Or, Ms. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, in the context of this debate, councilman, if you don't mind, I have looked at the memo, I am not a lawyer. I don't like this shadow boxing, and with complete respect, while there were some technical amendments that seemed to be fine, as there many times are, I have to say that I view the memo, the confidential memo, as frankly, not a legal opinion, but a political opinion. I believe it's the political opinion of the administration, because they oppose this legislation, because at its essence, it completely turns the legislation inside out and makes it completely, it's not what any of us, as far as I know, on the entire council intend for this legislation to turn out like. And it shouldn't be a mystery, it's not that complicated. This would take away the council's ability to be able to fire the sheriff and give it back to the executive, which means we've done nothing. The idea that eight councilmen can rise to the level of firing a sheriff, that's a very, very high standard, extremely high standard. It was meant to be that way, and I appreciate the fact that that was taken into consideration, because I know lower levels were considered. But this is not an illegal opinion. This is a political opinion dressed in a legal memo, because the administration will not come in front of us and tell us that they're opposed to this legislation straightforwardly and admit it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I strongly object to the characterization of this as a political memo. This was done entirely within the law department, with no discussions with anybody other than the council staff. This is not a political opinion. It is our issues that we identified with the form and structure of the amendment that's proposed. There's no politics involved. I said that during my confirmation hearing, and I'm saying it again. This is not a political issue for us.
Now, in my opinion, if anybody reads the memo, most people will come to a different conclusion.
Ms. Chair?
Ms. President, is it your intention to, if, no, is it your intention that if 0144 has a sufficient amount of votes to move it to the full council at today's meeting?
This council, if it has the sufficient votes to move to committee, to move out of this committee and move to council, that it be passed and forwarded to the voters of this county, without further interference?
Mr. Tuma, I'm wondering what your thoughts are?
Through the chair, just as an aside, so if we do move forward this, we do have a proposed substitute with some technical, not substantive changes, some technical changes that can be explained by council staff. But it would be my hope, if the votes are there, to move this forward. And I, again, it's what was put forth by the law department is their opinion. I've done a little bit of research myself, and I disagree with some of their findings. Again, I don't want to get into the details, because it's still confidential, as far as I know. But I do believe we have the legislative authority to do what we're doing.
I think, and Mr. Miller, you're next, I think what would be best for today is to move forward without consideration of a document that's not public regarding legislation that we're at the end of, not in the beginning of. And if further discussion needs to be had, I would suggest, then, that you discuss that with the author and the president as we move forward. Mr. Miller?
Mr. President, and my colleagues, and to the law director and the administration, I think you've set a dangerous precedent by sending a privileged memo about the details of a piece of legislation that is supposed to be publicly discussed. We're under the sunshine law, and the basic principle is that legislation is supposed to be deliberated on in public, and decisions are to be made in public. My belief is that we should all, in law department and council, agree to waive privilege and discuss the concerns and make a decision on them. You know, I don't think, I don't think we should be deliberately creating a private legislative process. I think that's contrary to the sunshine law. Thank you.
Ms. Baker?
Given I brought this up, come back full circle, I still, I think, with all the conversation we've had, not heard a reason why, as Mr. or Councilman Miller said, why we can't discuss this. I don't know what is harmful in discussing the recommendations that are listed. Secondly, I'm comfortable that we have a law director that we all confirmed, that understood through direct questions from us, that he represents us both, the administration and council, and that he gave an oath of office that said that he would do just that. So I guess I'm not sure why we can't discuss this. And secondly, I don't know, you know, what ramifications, if we're wrong, I mean, we're not the law director, he is. If we're wrong, and we put this on the ballot, and we find out later that maybe there are some things that we should have listened to and didn't, that we would be second guessing this. So those are my two. One is, why can't we discuss this? What is in here that is so confidential that it could be incriminating, I guess? I'm not sure. And second is, my concern about not listening to the man that we all confirmed said he would represent us both administration and council.
Well, again, I...
It's my opinion, and... It's my opinion, and my opinion alone, that at this late moment, that we shouldn't even consider it. It's an opinion of the law director that he's holding in confidence.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, you can waive the privilege if you so choose. The body can waive the privilege.
And here's where...
I can't waive the privilege, only the body can, only the client can waive.
Mr. Chairman?
I understand, I understand. Okay, Mr. Tuma?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I mean, if my colleagues are willing to waive it, I'm willing to waive the privilege. There's nothing nefarious in the document.
There is not, it's just...
It's an opinion, and I just disagree with it. I don't...
And, I mean, I'm willing to sit here all day and discuss this and debate it, but it's a document that I don't think holds too much weight with the council. It holds a lot of weight with the law director, and it may or may not go to Mr. Brady's thoughts. I mean, we don't know. We've had trouble, and we expressed this to you when you were confirmed, that people get confirmed through this council and forget that the council is 50-50 with the executive as far as the legal opinions around here.
And I have not forgotten that, and the department has not forgotten that.
And I understand that, and the day after you got confirmed, they sent you a letter, and I'm still waiting for an answer.
Still working on that.
It might be the single easiest legal opinion you'll ever write in your lifetime, and here I sit. So anyhow, let me see what Mr. Tuma would like to do with this, because it really affects, or doesn't affect his legislation.
May I turn my mic off? Mr. Chairman, you know, if my colleagues don't object, I'll make a motion to waive the legal opinion. There, I mean, people are going to want to see this anyway, and...
I think we could verbally do that, we don't have to vote on waive, no one, yet again, here we are in new waters.
Here's the thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I agree with Councilman Tuma. There's been, I think deliberately, but I'm expressing my opinion in attempt at the last minute to cast confusion and mystery around this, where there should be none. And so I think it's better that we just let everybody see what it is, it's so mysterious that we need to know, so we don't get into trouble, because we're like, you know, being irresponsible. So let's just hear the memo, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Tuma has a motion, is there a second to waive privilege? Second, by Ms. Brown? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, the veil has been lifted. Anybody wishing to discuss it? I do not, but anybody wishing to discuss it, go ahead.
Now, first of all, you know, I've read this memo, we didn't ask for this memo. You on your own, I believe, with the influence of the executive, produced a political policy opinion. This piece of paper has no basis in law or fact. If we can dissect the language in here, it's very clear that the charter allows us to make amendments and to move forward in the fashion in which we intend to move. This piece of paper either A is the most poorly written legal document I've read as an attorney, or it's simply an opinion to produce a policy outcome. That's my opinion about this memo. It wasn't asked for, it shouldn't have been privileged to begin with, it comes at the last minute as a grenade to try to confuse the issue. I agree with the president. And if your position is this has merits legally or in fact, then we've got a problem with our law department and law director.
I think going forward, I think we all know what's in it. I don't think it's helpful to keep moving this debate forward on it. We all know what we feel, either we give it weight or we don't. And I think that was the original intent, to let the individual council people make a decision. And I think, from what I'm hearing, the decision's loud and clear. Yes, ma'am?
We had an ordinance not long ago that also dealt with possible separation of powers. And we went through a pretty extensive research by our staff attorney at the time to show that, just as Councilwoman Simon said, our charter was very clear. Here we are again, with the same argument, with the separation of power. And, you know, I guess because this is going on the ballot, and we're giving our constituents 100% assurance that we are correct in what it is that we're doing, should we take the time to, you know, counter what's been perhaps proposed and make sure that we have our ducks in a row? That's the only thing that concerns me.
There's no counter, it's an opinion.
Mr. Chairman?
You have an opinion, he has an opinion, we have an opinion. Unless it's swaying you in some way, and I don't know how that would be, but it's possible, I guess that falls to your final vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think this is a very simple question for the law director. What part of this proposed legislation violates either the US Constitution, the Ohio Constitution, Ohio Revised Code, or a charter? We're the ones who are creating the charter amendment, so we're not going to be violating our charter. If there's some other legislation that it's not violating, there's no case law associated with this. I mean, if you do a few searches on the internet, you see city councils withdrawing, removing police chiefs on a regular basis, using a judiciary or quasi-judiciary process. I've used quasi-judiciary process in Parma before with respect to zoning issues, the city council did it. The law director said it's perfectly fine to do, as far as the removal process. I just don't see what the issue is here unless there's something I'm missing in the big picture.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman of the councilmen, I don't think the memo says it violates any of the provisions that you identified. What it does is point out that you're creating a structural problem within the charter.
Who's the problem for?
It's for, actually, for everybody, because, first of all, the preamble of the charter says that the purpose of this is, of the charter was for a separation of the administrative and legislative powers.
Right, we maintain that by allowing the executive to appoint the individual.
But, and then giving council the sole power to remove, and when you...
Chair, Mr. Chair, if I can interrupt, this is not, if...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Let me speak, if I can, after Tuma, because this is not true.
Author finish.
Sorry.
And I'll let the attorneys go ahead, just one.
Well, anybody can institute the process, though. So the executive, if the executive wants to remove the individual, it's just council, there's a due process that occurs here.
Yeah, but the only way that vote is approved is by a supermajority of the council. The executive does not have the authority to remove an officer who reports directly to him. He would have to come back through this body, and in fact, this body could institute that removal process on its own, independently of the executive. So that gives, that power to control is that, rather, the power to remove is the power to control. So then you step into the role of being basically the overseer of the sheriff's office.
I mean, I disagree with that.
Ms. Simon, did you want to respond?
You know what, you're right, we shouldn't, we could be here all day, but the memo itself is wrong, that somehow, we have the power to not only remove in this ordinance, but we always have had the power to confirm, which goes against your theory that somehow all executive power should only be in one place. The charter doesn't speak like that at all. We are here as an overseeing body, we're exercising our authority to do that, so that's how the charter was set up. But we can amend it how we see fit, without violating other, some mysterious separation of powers that you're invoking that don't even exist here. When you keep saying the sole authority, the sole body to remove the sheriff is us is wrong. The executive can do that. I don't, that's right there, not correct. Your memo's incorrect. Then, no, we don't have any other Ohio county that does this. Well, Buckeye Lake, Ohio, just removed the police chief, that's the county, the village to which Councilman Tuma refers. So your memo itself is factually incorrect, and it's legally soft, and frankly, and... frankly embarrassing, and I'm sorry, but when I'm, I'm handed a piece of paper like this to try to muck up an issue, I'm not gonna stay silent.
Okay, let's, after Mr. Schron, let's stay to the merits of the legislation, notwithstanding the memo that is now public. Mr. Schron.
Yeah, the, in the memo, it refers to that we would actually be controlling the process, but we have the ability to, to bring forth legislation on our own, independently. We can pass it by super majority, he can, it can be vetoed by the county executive, we can override that, so the entire process, in theory, could be legislatively passed, legislatively adopted, vetoed, overridden, and put into law. And I, I'm not sure I see a difference, the distinction that you're trying to make in regards to this, so we are doing, and I, and to Mr. Miller's credit, this is how sausage is made, unfortunately, as we all joked about that in the past, but this is the way the sunshine law should allow it to go. And, and we hope that perhaps on, that if we disagree with your opinion on this one, you're gonna nail it for the next one and we'll be, we'll all be in harmony on, on the next point of view, but fortunately or unfortunately, that's, that's what we have here, because the next one might be even more important when we start talking about subpoenas and who we can subpoena and where that person goes. So be, be prepared, because that might, might not be the person we're talking to this afternoon. It might be somebody else.
Okay, any further discussion on the merits of the-
Just to define, as I said, this, this doesn't say that the, the proposed amendment violates anything, as it says it creates a structural conflict. And if you choose to put that conflict in place, that's fine, we will fight like a dog to defend it, but I just want to make folks aware that it creates a bit of a conflict within the charter. Now, at the same time, and as I said earlier, you ask two questions, you ask two lawyers the same question, you get three answers, there is another argument that says that the specific controls over the general. So here you have an amendment that's very specific to the sheriff and to the, and how the sheriff is removed. The argument could be made that this would, that the specific would control in this case, and that would, could defend, or successfully defend any challenge. So, you know, as, it's, this is, as it's just a recommendation, it's our advice, didn't say you shouldn't do it. We just wanted to be sure that, that you were aware of any issues that could, could arise if it is put in place.
Appreciate that. Questions on the merits?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This entire line of conversation just reminds me of how much work we have, have to do. When we, when we look at what's going on in the jail and the, the lack of leadership, or however you wanna characterize it, the issues there are happening in other departments as well. It's happening in IT, OBM, the law, the Law Department, and-
I'm sorry?
People aren't dying in the IT department, that's just the reality. So we're doing what we need to do in, in the sheriffs. But when we go back and look, from day one, even in the Law Department, we know we confirm, but we, we always recognize the dynamic of, well, who does he really work for? He works for all of us. But if it comes down between the Law Direct, the, the executive and council, you know, where do they lean? And that's, that's not any person, that's not Director Huth or, or all the previous, it's just the, the way it's set up, the structural system. And when, and we recognize it, and we get our own legal representation when we feel like we might be at odds with the executive. We've done it before, and we'll probably have to do it again. But again, oh, in the coming years, months, year, whatever, we're gonna have to start looking at a lot of different areas and say, are they working as effectively and, under this role of managers? And do we have to look at it and, and make some sober decisions in other departments, not just the jail?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna say again, for the record, there was no political bias in the preparation of this memo in our office.
Okay, we're done with the memo. What do we have on the merits of this legislation?
Yes.
Which is why we are here today. Ms., well, Dale, would you, would you defer to Mr. Tuma?
No, you know, Mr. Chairman, I, I just have this, this proposed substitute, I wanted to go through the technical things, I don't know if you wanna do that after everybody speaks, or-
Let's let Mr. Miller-
That's fine, that's fine, I just don't wanna forget about it.
I, I think I'd like to let, let Councilman Tuma do the substitute, 'cause that kinda relates to where I was going, so let's do that first.
Okay, Mr. Tuma.
Okay, I appreciate that. If I could, council staff, Mr. Serene, if you could just go through the proposed substitute, these are more technical in nature, and I can't see without my glasses right now.
So, has, has the Law Director reviewed these substitutes?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, these are all based on recommendations that we provided in your memo.
Oh, thanks. Thank you. I knew we'd get there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to the, to the committee, Khalil Seren, council staff. There are just a few technical changes, mostly technical changes included in this proposed substitute. The first is in section 16.01-2B. The language that is removed is nationally accredited college or university, and it's replaced with college or university authorized to confer degrees by the Ohio Board of Regents, et cetera. This language clarifies the actual sort of authority behind the, the college or university degree and is taken word for word from the, the information that, or rather, the credentials that are mandated, at least as an option, by ORC Section 311.01-B9-B, that subsection of ORC, which provides certain requirements for the office of an elected sheriff. That's where that language is from, so this change sort of brings it in line with Ohio Revised Code and makes it a little bit more cohesive with that. The second technical change is in subsection 3, required certification. It allows for, if an appointed sheriff already possesses one of these certifications, they don't have to then go out and get another one upon their appointment, and it provides some more flexibility through the council to determine whether or not there is some additional time necessary for the appointed sheriff to receive these certifications. So if it, you know, if there's one, you know, class left or one test left and the time is almost running out and due to, you know, unforeseen issues, the appointed sheriff still needs another month to, to finish this certification, the council can allow the, the time to be extended for that purpose at council's discretion. And then the, the last change is the addition of a, a sentence that mandates that if the sheriff fails to, to, to comply with that section with the required certifications, that the office is deemed vacant. And so that means that if council, then, you know, if council allows for that additional time, the sheriff still does not obtain the certification, then that sheriff is forfeiting their office. And this is required, it was not required in the elected sheriff resolution, but in this resolution, because the charter section 12.03, which is called forfeiture of office, only applies to elected county offices, this was needed to specify that in this case, if the person did not maintain the qualifications necessary and required by the section, that the office would be vacant.
Mr. Tuma, do you wanna move this proposed substitute forward?
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one other point? It's a real minor technical change, it would really be in the category of a dramatical change. When you look at section 5, removal, line 5, where it's the fifth line, it begins "to be heard," and it says "and to present their case for retention," there's, there's a plural, you really should replace that with the word "a" or "a," to repeat, to, to present a case for retention in office. There's only one sheriff.
Just to respond-
It's just a grammatical change.
It, it is, it is entirely within the, I think the, the clerks, the grammatical changes can be made sort of administratively, but the, I think "their" was used as a possessive in the more modern sense for a singular "they" that provides for gender non-bias language.
Hey, it's- Thank you. I'm trying to keep up with all the changes. I, I was born in the, in the 50s, so you gotta stay with me. Ms. Tuma, you wanna move this proposed substitute?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, a motion to accept proposed substitute, kind of council, resolution number R.2019-0144.
Chairman, is there time for clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
In that first change, which is to, to quali, the, under qualifications B, it talks about changing it from a nationally accredited college to an Ohio.
Let's, let's move this and then we can discuss that.
Okay.
So I have the motion second. All in favor of moving resolution 2019-0144 as proposed, as substituted? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, ma'am.
Excuse me, Mr. Gallagher, I am unsure who the second was. Thank you, Mr. Schron.
So in the second qual, in the second item of the second item, you see that it has obtained a baccalaureate in any field or an associate degree in law enforcement or criminal justice from a nationally accredited college or university. I understand why you might wanna make it in line with Ohio law, but the search is to have someone who is one of the best qualified people in our community. And what if we had a retired federal agent who wanted to run for sheriff and their accreditations, et cetera, were from schools outside of Ohio? Why would you want to, why not just go with nationally accredited?
Mr. Chairman, the, the second clause of that insert says, "or the comparable agency of another state in which the college or university is located." So I think that covers the Councilwoman's concern.
I didn't see that.
It's in 2B, says from a college or university authorized to confer degrees by the Ohio Board of Regents, "or the comparable agency of another state in which the college or university is located."
May I be reading from the old one?
Does that s-
It's underlined.
All right. I'm reading from an old document.
We have different documents.
This is the proposed substitute now.
Proposed?
Not the original.
Khalil, Khalil just showed it to me.
Okay. It's the proposed substitute. Everybody on the same page?
No, I'm okay.
Are we good? We're good there. Okay, now that we have the proposed substitute as our legislative base here, are there any further discussions on the merit of this legislation? Okay, hearing none. Before, I, I think I just owe this to the authors and those that are voting for this. I cannot support this, since I've been here and it's been from the beginning, I have never seen such testimony as we've had for another piece of legislation, ever. I've never seen the judges of Cuyahoga County, the prosecutor of Cuyahoga County, the public defender of Cuyahoga County, past sheriff. I've discussed this with actually all of our past sheriffs, except, except for McFaul. I've done my due diligence, and I've never seen anything like that. It was impressive. They collectively know more than any of us in this room, collectively. We're not even close. So my hope is, my true hope is, is this legislation works. My fear is that it won't. I don't think I'll be around if it doesn't, so that's why I said it was important to have a record of where we're at and where we're going. But the one thing that the previous legislation or this legislation doesn't ask the question, we're here talking about the sheriff. And everybody in this room and everybody up here knows, we had three pretty good sheriffs. Reed, Bova, and now the present sheriff. Pretty good sheriffs. But we had to find a way to fix a problem. We had to fix the sheriff's department by doing this. Just a question. So when, when you have a moment tonight, think about that. We got a sheriff's problem in a county with good sheriffs. Pray tell, how did we get here today? And I'll leave it at that. Okay, do I have a motion for resolution 2019-0144 to the full council at today's meeting to be walked on for approval, and that would be the substituted legislation?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hearing movement and a second and further discussion, roll call please.
Moving resolution number 2019-0144 to the full council as substituted. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuma?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Schron?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
No.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Council President Brady?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Godspeed. We will take a three-minute break, or a five-minute break.